...do things that preclude our ability from making these improvements. We've identified locations in Mall B for staging areas. We've identified locations for pavilions and restrooms. That was a big complaint from the public. We've also identified locations to do unique lighting, LED lighting, energy efficient lighting, so that the mall can be aesthetically pleasing at night as well as during the day. And we've got some examples of other cities that have done that. And the urban rooms that we've identified would be specific locations we hope to develop through sponsorship dollars and also to use innovative practices from the standpoint of having local architectural firms participate in the design of some of those urban rooms. We're looking at reinstalling the Summit Walkway Bluff. Summit Avenue was a street at one time that went from Ninth Street to West Third Street, and it was a beautiful overlook of the lake, because if you recall, the lake once started just beyond the railroad tracks. We're looking at trying to reinstitute that as a pedestrian way. We have some issues with the location of parking garage exits, but it could be done. But that is one of the recommendations of the Group Plan Commission. Briefly, we have looked at the four working groups having specific tasks. The Public Participation Community Outreach Working Group is chaired by Felton Thomas, who runs our terrific library, and they really want to market this project and this development for the region. The plan identity that was developed through sort of an online poll is called Your Changing Cleveland, and we have a website called yourchangingcleveland.com. And Joe, if we could put up, it's a brief video on the yourchangingcleveland.com website. Again, this was done with almost all volunteer, the 2030 generation, the folks that are significantly younger than me, but the kind of people we want to have moving back to Cleveland. One of my goals has always been, when people ask me about the plan commission, what are we trying to do? My answer is simple: make Cleveland so cool, our kids are going to move back. And I happen to be lucky here, because my daughter Christine is here watching this, so she knows how I feel about that, because I want them to go to great schools, come back to Cleveland. And that's one of the things we can do. So let's, if we have, it's about a three-minute video, and it's interactive.
That clip is just downtown. Wow, there's a lot happening in Cleveland, and that clip is just downtown. That was a sneak peek. Check out the full video at downtownclevelandalliance.com. It's Your Changing Cleveland. Your, and the possibility that you are changing Cleveland. Cities consistently evolve. Cleveland is poised in the near future to add a Medical Mart, a casino, expand to the east bank of the flats, and the lakefront, and reexamine Public Square and the malls. Malls? No. We're not talking about Beachwood or Great Northern, but rather malls A, B, and C. Yes, the public spaces around Key Tower, City Hall, and the Cuyahoga County Courthouse. Think of it as starting from scratch, and you being able to suggest some ingredients for tomorrow. Yes, you. It's about public space and connections. How do we make the most of the energy around these new development projects? People have been thinking about this for a long time, probably crossed good old Moses Cleveland's mind when he was looking at the connection between Lake Erie and the Cuyahoga River. At the turn of the 20th century, Daniel Burnham, a world-renowned architect and planner, who also rocked an awesome mustache, looked at the downtown and helped to devise a plan that was mostly implemented and still impacts us today in the 2010s. It was a colossal imprint, but times have changed. This year, Mayor Frank G. Jackson assembled another group of people to revisit Burnham's plan and make suggestions. This group of group plan commissioners had the banks, libraries, foundation, and sports teams of this city. These leaders are now asking you, yes, you, to participate. Think of the best urban public park spaces you've ever seen or visited. What made those spaces memorable? What made them enjoyable? What made you want to write a postcard telling your friends at home that this rocks? Now, think about Cleveland's malls. Malls A, B, and C together are the size of three football fields. If you had a wish for what you would want to see in Cleveland Central Park, what would you wish for? A skating rink? A quiet place to read? A play area for toddlers? A place to congregate? Public art? A skate park? A water feature? Whatever you think suggested. What are the most important characteristics of that space? Think of the mall as the central link connecting the best parts of downtown Cleveland. What are the best parts that need to be connected to the mall? How can these connections be more clearly defined so that even tourists can understand them? How can they be stronger? It's Your Changing Cleveland. Visit www.yourchangingcleveland.com to find out where you can find a Your Changing Cleveland input station, or give your suggestions online.
So what we've done is taken public participation to a new level. We're trying to take input over the Internet. We're trying to get younger people engaged who may not want to come to a meeting like this, or a 7:30 in the morning meeting, because if we're going to make a decision, we want to make sure that we have the input of the community. So we're proceeding to do that, and we're still doing that. The input station, which was developed, and again, some of this was done with volunteers, some of this was done with people who had to be paid, because we had to put a computer in this, but it's a traveling info station that we've had at the IX Center, we've had it at City Hall, we've had it out at University Circle. And it's a way that you can watch that video and also vote on, hey, you know what? I'd like to see this. I'd like to see, you know, some sort of a basketball facility. I'd like to see a splash park. I'd like to see a reading garden. I'd like to see some, you know, some regional flowers located in the mall. So we're doing that, and Felton Thomas has done a great job. We're trying to establish a speakers bureau on that, so we can go out and take it to the community, so that people can actually participate. We want to get the Cleveland Public Schools more engaged in the process, so that they can learn about urban planning and learn about our mall and some of the history that's down there. So we've got a collaborative process that's ongoing, and the working group chairs are still meeting. The other working group is the Governance and Implementation Working Group. It's chaired by Doug Miller from the Jacobs Group. These are the members of the commission, and they had a job to do, which is initially to establish a district, which they've done and have recommended. Again, a group plan commission, which would be set up like a nonprofit, with an appointment process through the county, the city of Cleveland, MMPI, and also the Greater Cleveland Partnership, so that it would operate as a nonprofit, not with a huge staff, hopefully to contract for services with the Park Works, with the Downtown Cleveland Alliance to program, maintain, and then also to work with some professional architects and engineers regarding design. The Finance Committee Working Group is chaired by Don Mishoff from Ernst &amp; Young, and they have identified different ways to provide public, private, philanthropic, and innovative ways to try to fund some of these improvements. So I'm saving the price tag to the end, so... But Don's going to be engaged throughout the process, and as we transition into a formal organization, we hope, the same folks who have been chairing the different working groups have agreed to stay on during the interim period of time. So we're identifying different sources of funding as well. And they have made recommendations, which we've shared with the mayor, Cleveland City Council, we're sharing this with you now, and it's going to be in the report that you get, and also the county executive, so that we can have some collaboration around this, and hopefully be able to make recommendations by the end of the summer formally. This is our budget, and this was done through using a cost estimator that was retained, working with LMN and GGN, the Landscape Architectural Firm and the Architectural Firm for the Convention Center. And these are the estimated costs for the whole project, which would be restoring Public Square, connecting to the lakefront, and redoing the mall the way I described. And you're looking at $87 million to $90 million. A lot of money, absolutely a lot of money, but we think it's a significant improvement in transforming our downtown. And if you stick just with the mall, by the way, the cost comes to approximately $15.3 million, just the mall. And if you throw in the Summit Walkway, which would go from Ninth Street to West Third Street, it comes to approximately $27 million, just for the direct mall area, which would directly affect the Convention Center and much of that improvement. I know this is a lot of information, so I'll end there, and thank you for the time. I would be glad to answer any questions you have. I will give you a booklet of our report, and I really appreciate the time here, and I hope that we are going to be able to, at some point, come back like Mr. Applebaum and show you, you know, how things are progressing.
Thank you, Mr. Coy. Mr. Brady has a question.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairperson. Nice to see you, Mr. Coy. This is all quite exciting in a lot of ways, and particularly appreciate the way that it respects the history of the city. You had mentioned at the time of the group plan, there was a hope for, in those days, of a great train station on the lake. And the one thing I heard that I saw missing, although there was certainly not much missing, was any talk of any kind of a transportation hub. I don't mean necessarily on the mall itself, but there has been some talk about high-speed rail traveling through the city. I don't know how much of that is hopeful and how much of that is reality, but it seems probable and even inevitable to me at some point. And I'm just wondering if there are, if there is any talk or any thinking about a transportation hub as part of the planning.
Absolutely. Let me say this, too. I have been around long enough where I'm really much more interested in shovels in the ground than good plans. One of the things, you know, Norm Crumhouse, if those of you know Norm, he's on the planning commission with me, and I kid Norm, because he's in his 80s, and he teaches planning at Cleveland State, and I keep kidding him that the last thing I'm doing with this project is to have some planner like Norm teaching it in the College of Urban Affairs and talking about, here's another plan we never did in Cleveland, you know, from IMPA's plan to our lakefront planning. So what I presented is what I think is really imminently doable. We have looked at what's considered an intermodal facility, but it just hasn't had funding. And we've had some preliminary designs, certainly of a location, and Linda Henriksen and I can give you a longer discussion on this, but I believe it's worth pursuing. I'm just not sure who is the champion of that. What an intermodal facility would be, would be a combined parking structure, train station, which would be connected also to the waterfront line, because they're all in proximity, and also presumably to potentially integrate some of the bus systems. You know, the Megabus is very popular, the Greyhound station could have some adaptive reuse. We haven't had those discussions, but we would like to, at some point, look at that, and that would be just north of the Convention Center, and you could potentially have a direct connection to the Convention Center by having, you know, an Amtrak station redone in that location. I'm just not sure, like, which government authorities we go to to do that. I think trains are in this country's future and this region's future. You know, some people don't feel that way. I think it is likely to be increased significantly. And again, to look at Cleveland, that's a temporary train station. It's been there for 35 years. It was built as a temporary train station. So the answer to your question is, I think we're not foreclosing any opportunities.
Well, I appreciate that, and it seems to me that, you know, we are actually one of the few cities, even though our rapid is old, that comes directly from the airport. I've always been amazed, in major cities that have great transportation systems, they don't always go to the airport, which I find mysterious. It seems that an extension of the system from the airport to the Convention Center area is obvious.
Mm-hmm.
But thank you, Madam Chairperson.
That's a good point.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Greenspan?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I probably have great appreciation for the value of downtown parks, coming from Atlanta and seeing what happened after the Olympics, and actually, I probably would think of all the, of all the infrastructure improvements that happened during the Olympics in and around Atlanta with the building and redesign and rebuilding of a number of venues. The park itself was probably the single largest catalyst towards downtown economic growth. The world of Coke relocated right off the park, the George Aquarium was off the park, a number of hotels went in. It was a phenomenal, a phenomenal event, and I'd like to see the same thing happen here. How, so I guess my question now comes down to the funding, and I understand, you know, you talked about public-private partnerships and naming rights. How much is the city of Cleveland willing to invest? How much is it set aside to invest for the development of the park itself?
Our Finance Committee has put together, and they're working on, it's in the presentation, different ways to try to do that. I can't give you a dollar figure that the city of Cleveland's going to write a check for currently, but combined with the city's authority to do certain taxing opportunities, combined with capital dollars that we could look for in Columbus, I dare say, I know it's controversial, but, and then working hopefully collaboratively with the county, we've retained financial folks to sort of address how to do that. You know, and again, I don't want to get too provocative on that, because I think in these difficult times, when you talk about financing, it's challenging. But there's a special improvement district, for example, in downtown Cleveland, where there's sort of a self-imposed tax by property owners. You could do something with that. Our parking, and I've gotten a lot of hits on this, but I will say this, our parking rates in downtown Cleveland compared to other cities is unbelievably low. And I don't think that's necessarily a good thing, because we want to have people take public transportation and contemplate other ways to get downtown. And I use this as an example. Downtown Pittsburgh, I met a client for lunch at McCormick and Schmick's for an hour and 45 minutes. I paid $25 to park in a self-park garage. You could go to David's, use valet parking, same time for lunch, 11 bucks. What does that mean? It means that maybe that would be an avenue, since we have parking garages surrounding the facility. You could do some sort of a surcharge for users that could go into either a capital investment fund or a programming opportunity to raise money. So the city, because of the way the city's structured, we're going to look at those kinds of opportunities, but we also want to do it as collaboratively as possible and get as much private sector dollars at the table. We are planning a major gala fundraising event for this, and we're also anxiously awaiting our naming rights study, because we have superlative retained, Cleveland State is part of the group, and then there's an economist from University of Arizona. And I can only tell you, if you look at Chicago and how they did that, much of it was through parking revenues, much of it was privately done through naming rights. The Pritzker Pavilion, the BP Bridge, the Chase Plaza, all of those things, because I think that, you know, that would be nice to be able to present to the taxpayers that it's a public, a true public-private partnership, not public-public-public-private partnership.
Madam Chair, just to continue with the baseline, you know, park.
Yes.
Is that, where's the funding coming for that, or is that part of it?
That is predominantly from the county, and that is probably somewhere in the vicinity of $20 million.
Okay, so that's coming out of the current Medical Mart project budget?
Let me, Tony, if I could, let me just clarify, because I want to make it clear. The original obligation that we had pursuant to all of our legal agreements was to restore the malls at least to their existing condition now, which was a low bar. We determined that in order to activate those malls, because we have to have good malls for the Convention Center project, and we're bringing visitors, and so we decided there was a level that we had to get to, which is what Tony described as the baseline. So that is, when we talk about our budget, our $460 million budget, all of that work is already in our budget, that's already in the Turner contracts, it's already part of the guaranteed maximum price. So that entire baseline is what we're providing. Everything that Tony is talking about would be something above that baseline. But we are responsible for the baseline, and so everything there is already accounted for in all of our numbers.
Right.
So the original plan would be effectively restored to its original pre-construction condition?
Really better.
It'll be a little better.
It's a lot better. It's the baseline that you've seen. If you haven't seen clearly the baseline, I can share that with you and show you exactly what we're doing. And the number on that is actually north of $21 million. That's from the waterproofing layer up.
Would there be an opportunity? My question then becomes, what's the timeframe, Mr. Applebaum, so what's the timeframe that would be needed for the city to come forward with, say, this $15 million plan, and then does the 15 become 35 million with the 20 plus the 15?
There's actually been some planning on this, and it is likely that we'll, I'll come forward shortly on this. We've been working, you know, without expressing an opinion, because it's not, you know, my job or my role to suggest what should be done there. But what we have done is, we have created, in conjunction with the Group Plan Commission, we have created a schedule. We've said, look, there's certain decisions that have to be made now, go-no-go decision for some of these things to occur. By way of example, if you had a water feature right now, you would have to put some infrastructure in, at least to account for, you know, piping, plumbing. There's, so there's some things that we've identified, and we've said, we've set, we've created a two-part schedule. And we've said, there's some things that have to be done right now, there's some architecture and engineering that has to be done right now, not to foreclose these things. That's basically Phase One. That actually has to be done in the next few months, and we've identified what the cost of that is. We've then said that based upon the recommendations you've seen here, the second step would be to at least go through the very preliminary design, schematic design. Prepare a schematic design that shows conceptually what those things would be. Now, this is not full design. This is just enough that you could take it, Tony could go to fundraisers and say, you know, do you have an appetite for this? We have agreed, and we have created or analyzed the timeframe for that first stage, the timeframe for getting that schematic design done, how much time they would have to make their decisions if it's going to be incorporated into this. Beyond that schematic design, it would be absolutely up to the Group Plan Commission to figure out which, if any, of those things they decided that they could get, raise the funds for, you know, sponsor whatever they're going to do, and make the decision. So we're going to be in a position, so as not to foreclose any of that, there's actually a relatively small cost involved to get to that initial, get those first two stages of design done. The cost of doing that, by the way, is somewhere in the vicinity of half a million dollars to do all that work. We're not, by the way, agreeing to do that. We're simply saying that's what the cost is, and there's, and there'll be a discussion as to what might occur with that cost. But we're simply saying, if you want to do it, here is the plan, here's how it would be done, and we could, and there'll be a conversation about, you know, how that costs, who bears that cost, and how it's implemented. But there is a plan to do it. We know exactly how to do it in the schedule, we know when things have to occur, and that information's all been shared. So we know all that.
Would the, if the timeframe, let's say that the Group Planning Commission works quickly and is able to identify $15 million, would that $20 million effectively be a credit towards a greater project? Would the 20 and the 15 be able to work together? No?
No, that 20 million is, you have to do all that work. That 20 million is committed, and that's a baseline. Everything we're talking about would be in addition to. You're not going to get any savings.
There's no synergy there by?
No.
Okay.
No. I mean, yeah, here's the savings. You have an area that we're going to have grass. Theoretically, I suppose if you put a, if you put a pond there, theoretically, yeah, there's some savings. There's a few dollars of grass that you don't put in, because you put, you put a water feature in. So, I should say, there are some savings, but they're not major savings. It's some work that you wouldn't do. So there'd be some trade-off, but nothing significant.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Schwan?
You have Mr. Applebaum. Are there loads that, if we go all the way to the $89 million of additional loads coming on the top of that space that are not factored in, or additional, the caissons having to be changed or configured as mushroomed down the bottom or anything of that?
That's a very good question, and the answer is, that is not an issue, because what we did, as this process commenced, what we did, and keep in mind that what's occurred here is that the Group Plan Commission has independently retained GGN, a landscape architect, who is also the landscape architect for the base mall. So what we have done is, LMN has been involved, there is no option that can be considered by the Group Plan Commission that creates more of a structural issue, that creates any structural issue for us. And one thing that, this is, this may be surprising to you, but for example, if you put a water feature in, people don't normally realize this, but actually, the load for a water feature is less than the load of dirt. It actually creates less of a load, not more of a load. So the bottom line is, is we were very careful about that. We've been working directly with the design professionals in their role with the Group Plan Commission, and there's nothing that's being contemplated here that will create an additional load over what we already have with respect to any of the structural work. So that's not a problem.
So a load that would have an amphitheater, which might carry 5,000 or 10,000 people, I don't know whether, what kind of numbers we're talking about, standing on top of that roof system is all contemplated in their current business.
To the extent, and I, I'm not going to speak for you, I don't think we're going to have a, I hope we're not going to have a permanent stage, but that's, you know, that's something that we've talked about.
No, you know, we, actually, we have, and those load-bearing issues in terms of people.
But we've considered them all.
We've had LMN look at that, and they've come back with, you know, advising, like, how many people could be standing, sitting, what type of events. That's all going to be, will have to be factored in.
But forget the coolers factor.
Well, no, right. No, you're right. No, we have, we have actually looked at that. And, you know, as, just an aside, your question's a very good one, because part of the reason, I believe it was the All Nations Festival, I believe, was relocated from Mall C, was because of the beer trucks. The beer trucks were damaging the ceiling and the foundation of that part of the Convention Center, so they could not use beer trucks. So we have to think of things like that as this thing gets programmed. And one other thing, we have a significant piece of art that someone is contemplating. Where that goes will be dependent, not only on aesthetics, but actual structural issues. You could, you can't, like, the bean in Chicago, if you've been to Chicago, that big, it's a big chrome bean, that is far too heavy to be anywhere on Mall B or C. So if we have any kind of heavy artwork, we'll have to look at where it goes. If it goes over a column, you could actually get some pretty heavy stuff, but you're going to have to be careful. So we're taking all that into consideration and not doing any suggested cost changes to the baseline design.
The bottom line is, is that all this information is known, so all the design which is, that would be proposed by the Group Plan Commission is within the parameters. All this is known, all the structural information is known, and they understand they can't create any additional loads, it's got to be net neutral. So that's all, that's all built into the planning.
They can't change the scope of our project based on what goes on top, in other words.
Right.
We're not obligated to return it to a structural strength beyond what we already anticipate.
Our project meets our obligations, and the Group Plan Commission will have to work within the parameters of what's there. They can't, they can't do anything that would create a problem for us down below. We're not going to put more columns in, by way of example.
And back to Mr. Greenspan's comments, so we're really looking at it as $110 million, not $89 million, if I'm doing the math correctly, because you're going to take the $21 million that we're putting in, plus the $89 million.
Yeah, that's, that's already been agreed and is sort of...
I understand it, but you're, yeah, but you're correct. Ultimately, to finish off these malls.
To finish off the malls, because, you know, the city of Cleveland technically has a responsibility to manage and maintain these malls, to program these malls when they're done. That's the city's responsibility. Part of the role of the Group Plan Commission would be to work in a more collaborative environment with the county, the city, Greater Cleveland Partnership, and MMPI, and having, you know, proportional representation on that body, whether it's seven, nine, 11 members, I'm not sure, but that's what our recommendation is, to have it done where the county also is at the table, the city's at the table, obviously representative of MMPI because of programming issues, and then also the Greater Cleveland Partnership, and to work with the Downtown Cleveland Alliance and a Park Works-type organization. So we're not creating a new nonprofit that's going to be a fully-staffed entity, but something that would be staffed with existing organizations, doing really great work with our public spaces in downtown Cleveland.
So if the scope is $110 million, and we're in for $21 million of that, we're roughly, not quite 20 percent, is the city going to be in, in a proportional basis to our dollars amount? I know you didn't, I didn't, you didn't get to a number, but I was trying to get to a percentage or a relationship.
I'm sure, I'm sure that's a conversation we'll have to have. I mean, I can't say that I've looked at how proportionate it's going to be, but certainly, that's something that we're going to try to work with you on. Yeah. And I mean, I appreciate everything the county's doing, certainly, with this part of the project and preserving the space. So I think that we're going to have to work collaboratively going forward, and I would presume that as part of the Group Plan Commission getting established, that's going to be a discussion between the, again, the elected leadership in the county and the city to make a decision on, you know, what members are going to serve and how that's going to be established as an appointed process, because it's going to be basically a nonprofit. So you're going to have to look for volunteers that are passionate about transforming our downtown.
Thank you.
Mr. Coy, would you please advise possibly Mr. Nanny of when your meetings are, so that we can either send a representative or have a staff person attend?
Absolutely. And we're currently not meeting as regular, because we completed sort of our recommendation. So we're really waiting for, and it's really the financing piece to come back with, what are the ways to address the fundraising privately and publicly? And then, and then I'm presuming that there will be a discussion with the mayor of the city of Cleveland, Cleveland Council, the county executive, and this body to address who and how the appointment process works, so that, you know, when those meetings are formally undertaken, once the Group Plan Commission is fully established, then I would, I would think that that would be...
Yeah, if you advise me and Mr. Nanny, or Mr. Matt, we'll advise the rest of council. Thank you. Mr. Rogers had a question.
Yes. Thank you. That was a very detailed presentation. I really appreciate that. I just had a question on the, I guess it's timeline-related. Has the public participation piece ended, concluded?
Nope. It's ongoing, and if you get on yourchangingcleveland.com, you can also log on to that. You can go through the Cleveland Planning Commission website, I think you can go through the Cleveland Public Library website as well. So these recommendations are still fluid, because I think we want to make sure that we, we are, you know, responsive to what people want to see on the mall. And I'll give you a little example. I mean, I want to get some kids and some parents to address, like, literally a playground location. location. When you look at what they've done in some of these other cities, they've actually done that. What you and I may think would be a really cool playground, a lot of people are gonna, you know, say it won't be used. The basket, we've suggested a basketball court and a volleyball court, for example. Some people, that's like, why would you wanna do that? Can you imagine kids hanging out playing basketball? A lot of people respond negatively to that. But you know what? We've got about three thousand people between the ages of twenty and thirty-five that are living full-time in downtown Cleveland. A lot of them are young professionals. Where do they play basketball? You go to Chicago, Boston, Philadelphia, there are places to do that, and they're downtown. And we don't have anything. So maybe it's a bad idea, and maybe we still have to vet it, but if you do it right, if you could have it managed, if you can have it locked, open in certain periods of time, other periods of time not, you can, you can do it. So I guess we're still taking that input. It's very important.
So will that input continue until the half-million dollars is raised for the schematic design, or what's the...
The, well, the, what Mr. Applebaum is addressing would be to include what I would call add alternates, let's say for piping, or conduits for different electrical work, for lighting that you might wanna include, so that you don't foreclose opportunities, not that you'd actually pay for the installation of the fountain. You know, that may be something that could be done before construction's completed, it may be something that won't be installed for five or six years. So that's what we're looking at, trying not to foreclose an opportunity.
And just for clarity, the role of Park Works and Cleveland Public Art, are they serving as advisors, or...
They have essentially agreed to staff the work of the commission. Park Works has also served as a fiscal agent. We have raised publicly and privately for some of the work we've done, probably close to two-hundred thousand dollars. Some of that's come from the city, some of it's come from two of the city's foundations. We've also raised money from different corporate contributions. Literally, half of it has been private, half of it has been public. The county has participated in some of that. So they've been helpful in that regard, both organizations, which are sort of in a strategic alliance. I think that's public, and I think that's gonna be something that we hope to take advantage of.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Madam President, to Mr. Coy, I have, I have a comment and a question. First, in the way of a comment, since, since we're doing the Medical Mart and it of necessity requires a tearing up and a redoing of the mall, it would seem to me that the, that our obligation to restore the mall to its former or equivalent condition, to my mind, would mean that the twenty-one million dollars would not be considered as part of the mall investment, but the, but if we're gonna improve the mall, the eighty-nine million dollars, in my opinion, is what we're talking about. My question is as to the, the access to the lakefront.
Yes.
And in terms of access to the lakefront generally, in Cuyahoga County, it could be done at a number of places. And my question is whether, whether Mall A is the optimal place to do it, or whether there are, that are, whether there's better places that would provide good public access to the lakefront.
Okay. I can, and you meant Mall C. Mall A is closer to the superior, but...
Mall C, I'm sorry.
Yeah. But, you know, Councilman Miller, the recommendations are threefold, to improve the safety and the accessibility of East Ninth Street and West Third Street, because they're already there. And I'm a, I'm a bad jogger, but I still do that, and it's not safe, really, at certain times of the day to, as a pedestrian, walk those two routes. The connection from Mall C would be on the, there are two promenades, an east and west promenade, it'd probably be just off to the eastern promenade, and with the design abilities of bridge architecture, now you could have a curving bridge that could land between the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame and the Science Center, so there are different ways to do it. We'd like it to be, and what we've talked about, that it not just be a bridge, not something that you'd see O'Donnell to cross a freeway not far from Mr. Schran's business, since I'm a Collinwood guy. But, you know, those pedestrian bridges are not what we're talking about. We're talking about something that's gonna be really iconic, that people are gonna identify with it when they go to a Browns game and they drive down there. So that, that's what we wanna do, and that really is the most logical way to do it. If we go back to this intermodal, you actually could potentially build something that would be what we've called in the Planning Commission, a Mall D, or some type of a baseline foundation. So you'd go down steps in front of the grand window overlooking the lake, which is on the north part of the Convention Center, and then have a walkway crossing over there, but you've gotta do a lot of structural changes with the west walkway system. So those are the things that we've tried to look at addressing, and it's really important, because if you're at the Marriott, if you're a family at the Marriott, you wanna go to the Science Center, they'll tell you, take a cab. You go to the concierge, how do you get there, and you've got little kids, they'd never tell you to walk, and it's a short walk, but it's a crummy walk. You can't go down those steps with a stroller. So it's really an important thing we have to address. So that's the current location, and that's, you know, it could change if somebody has a better idea, I'm all about better ideas, but right now, that seems to be the location.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Madam President, just one final, no, no, it's just, and it's actually not even a question, it's a recommendation, and I refer back to the Olympic event in Atlanta. I would recommend that you contact Billy Payne, who was the chairman. He raised all that money privately for that park, and he is somebody who I think would be very instrumental in helping us here in Cleveland.
I would, if you, do you have contact information for him, or should I just check out the internet, because he's a pretty well-known guy?
Yeah, he's the chairman of Augusta National, so I don't think he's too hard to find.
Oh, okay, okay, I could do that. I've met with a few people in St. Louis, for example, they had one local citizen write a check for twenty-five million dollars, you know, so I'm looking for, if you have any benefactors of your campaigns that would be willing to do something, or willing to talk to them about it, but, and Chicago had a champion doing the same thing with corporate contributions, so that's, that I think is really very, very important. You know, if I, I can add one thing, Mr. Schran, you asked a question, I just wanted to add one thing. You were asking Mr. Applebaum about the expansion areas potentially, just for the record. There is one other one that was studied many years ago by L M N, who's your architect on this project, or M M P I's, to go northeast of the state, of the Convention Center, sort of north of City Hall, and it was a bridge system that they actually preliminarily laid out as another potential exhibit hall, if necessary. I just throw it out, because it was, I think, a very preliminary design, but it's, that occurred probably two Convention Center generations ago.
I was hinting that maybe there's one continuous, but not necessarily adjacent to.
Okay, very good.
It's another public building.
Understood.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. We have, this is the second in our updates relative to the Medical Mart, and I've kinda looked at the calendar here, and I'd like to schedule that for July twenty-six at four o'clock for our next work session, and we'll advertise that in case members of the public would like to attend, but we certainly appreciate these updates, and we appreciate the tour this afternoon.
And could I, could I give these to your clerk?
Yeah, we'll be taking a break, so we can pass them out.
Oh, sure, thanks.
All right, is there any other, this is for our work session?
Thank you very much.
All right, motion to adjourn, and we will reconvene at six o'clock for our regular session. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.